For March the 4th, 2025. It's another beautiful day in Garner, sun shining and a beautiful day inside. Man, look at the turnout we got tonight. I wish we had the camera that could pan the audience at the time that we would do it tonight. And we probably have a record number of people viewing at home tonight. There's some big items on the agenda. So we'll get to that in just a moment. Let's start out by asking the town clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Gupta.
Here.
Mayor Proton Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
And Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
I want to point out one other change here in the town hall this evening. We have, I don't want to say a new face, we have a new face, have an old face and a new seat. We're so proud to have the leader of the fire department for the last 15 years, longtime, 30-year contributor to the fire department. Matt Poole has joined us this week. Yesterday, I think was your first official day, even though we tried to get a little good out of you last week and that was great. So he's still with you guys and gals. He's still here with you. Glad to have you here. Now, I'd like to call on Councilmember Dellinger for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
Please rise up, Gregel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands on a nation under God, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please join me if you wish. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together and do the collective work of looking out for our neighbors and town. We trust that you will lead us to wisdom and to decisions that keep and bring greatness to our community, honor you and bring out the best in all of us. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Dellinger. And now we move to section D of the agenda, which is petitions and comments. I'll ask our town attorney if anyone has signed up to speak for this portion.
No one has signed up for the petitions and comment portion of the meeting.
Then we'll move right along. We'll adopt the agenda. Our councilmembers have had this in their hand to look this over. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Matthews, seconded by Ms. Behringer. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing done, unanimously approved. And now to the good part. We have moved the fire discussion to the very first thing as a presentation because of the impact of this and the culmination of, is it eight years of working on this or maybe slightly more? We'll have, we'll hear some more details. Our presenter tonight is Jody Miller, our town manager, who has been instrumental in helping bring all this together. Ms. Miller.
Thank you, mayor and members of council. What an exciting evening for the town of Garner. Tonight, I'm going to provide you some information overview of the fire services and transfer of assets agreement. And formerly, we've called it the fire merger agreement where the Garner Fire Rescue Department, after this agreement is approved, will become a department under the town government effective July 1. So as the mayor mentioned, this has been a discussion and work for many, many years and this timeline's a good representation of the work that was taking place to get us to the point where we are this evening. The MOU committee was created in 2017 with membership from the town as well as the Garner Fire Rescue Board. In 2021, the MOU committee decided to hire North Carolina Fire Chief Consulting to help with the work and do a four-phase process to evaluate the opportunity for this merger and understand all the opportunities and challenges with that. In 2022, the benefits review was completed. This was an essential part of the review and discussion in terms of should we merge? In 2023, our phase two of our work, doing our review and evaluation was completed. We also held several public meetings to get public input on the idea to understand the community's questions and also to be able to provide information. In spring of 2024, a joint resolution was approved, essentially directing staff to work on putting together a framework for an agreement for the merger to happen, also completing phases three and four that looked at the financial impacts and analysis as well as finalizing the benefits analysis as well. And here we are today in 2025. Before you tonight for consideration is approval of the final agreement in which will, as of July 1st, effectively make the Garner Fire Rescue Department a town within, the town of Garner, a department in the town of Garner. So why merge? This was one of the early conversations that we had often at the MOU committee level. And as a reminder for everyone who's been involved in this process or maybe new to it, we had lots of discussions and here were some of the highlights of why the MOU committee decided we should move forward with this. It allowed for more strategic resource and operational planning to meet increased service demands due to the town's growth. We all know the town has grown dramatically over the last couple of years and we needed to better plan for that strategic resource alignment, also in alignment with negotiating with our partner in Wake County. To improve coordination and planning for enhanced service and future capital provisions. We also looked at the continual financial investment the town was making in the department and looking at modeling that moving forward, especially as the town was growing and the unincorporated areas continued to shrink. The consolidated plan also looked for some efficiencies in some basic services, things like HR, finance, public works, IT, things that the town already had the infrastructure to be able to provide and support to the fire department and looking at opportunities to enhance those and make those available to the fire department. We also looked at opportunities for greater financial and benefit stability. There was also discussion about just the fire service in general and how the volunteer fire model was trending more towards a public or municipal type model. And the final area, we talked about this a lot at the MOU committee level, was it was really important to create a shared vision for fire services in Garner now and in the future. All right. So the agreement that's been provided in your agenda this evening includes the following highlights. You will find that the actual agreement, it's about 43, 44 pages, but with all the schedules and appendices, it's over 400 pages. So we're going to hit the highlights of what's included in the agreement. So the agreement includes transfer of assets and hiring employees to create a municipal fire department for the town. The focus will be to continue to provide fire protection and first responder services to the entire fire district. The agreement includes all assets transferred to the town except for those owned by Wake County facilities and vehicles, making sure a training facility was part of the future of Station 6, making sure the benevolent fund that's now part of the fire department is transferred to the town, transferring 86 FTEs, that's 86 employees that will become town employees effective July 1. That's a 35% increase in our workforce in essentially one day. As part of the transfer of those FTEs, important to make sure we honor the hire date for the fire employees and that hire date was when they were hired by the fire department. They'd be eligible for town benefits. And also the question about longevity, the longevity policy that the fire department currently has and the town has are not specifically aligned, so looking at adding a 1% additional base pay to those who would no longer be eligible for the town's benefit. Also be recommending three new fire FTEs in next year's budget as well. And the town supports the department's rebranding efforts and those are ongoing. We spent a lot of time last week at your retreat talking about the FY '26 budget and the impacts of the fire merger and Jürgen Park opening. Just wanted to remind council and the community about approving this agreement, what that's going to mean as far as impacts on FY '26. So as I mentioned, they'll be, we'll be adding, recommending three new firefighter positions, but when you take on 86 new employees, you also have to look at infrastructure needs and support needs for some of our departments within the town. So we'll be adding nine total FTEs in HR, IT, budget, building maintenance and fleet to be able to support the transition of the fire department to the town. We'll also need in FY '26, some support on the legal side, so looking at some contract services and as well as some investment in technology to make sure that we can transfer all the technology over to the town's technology. And you'll see in some of these pictures, a few familiar faces that you may even see in tonight's meeting. All right. So that was a brief overview of a timeline of where we've been and where we are, what's included in the agreement. And although I only had a few slides to tell the story tonight, it's been, it's been quite the project and the effort. It's a lot of people have been involved to get us to this place where we are tonight. I want to say a special thank you to the Garner Fire Rescue Board, to the town council and to the MOU committee. All three of these groups and the leadership really got us to a point where we can say, this is something we should do and consider and approve moving forward. Also working with Chief Grayson and his associate Andy Snipley, they have been instrumental in facilitating this process for us, everything from working with the MOU committee, working with us on the public meetings we had, and then really working with us on the operational and financial analysis. We have a number of fire employees who've been at the table with this since the very beginning, our retired chief, Matt Poole, interim chief Barrett Penny, assistant chiefs Jason Deitch and Jason Hathcock. Thank you all for your work you've done to date. Also with the fire department is Ariel Smith and Kim Woodall. Just to give council a perspective, this group meets every two weeks and we started meeting every two weeks since this past summer in order to make sure that we had everything completed, to only bring forth to you the contract tonight, but everything's in order for a July 1 implementation. On the towns team, David Beck, Mari Hal, Boris Jones, Sarah Warren, Tom Howley, Jenny Jones and Karen Harris have all been at the table every two weeks with our fire department colleagues, working through the details, making sure we have a smooth transition so this can be a success. So mayor, thank you for the opportunity to give this brief overview. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay, council members, any questions for town manager Miller? Okay. You must have been a very thorough presentation. Thank you very much. You can remain standing or you can sit down if you like. We're gonna, since there were no questions, I'm probably going to ask for a motion and second, we'll have a vote. As I was instructed, get the business out of the way, we'll come back and do some more recognition and a little bit more discussion, but if that works for you.
Certainly.
That's what we'll do. Okay, that being the case then, is there a motion before the council? Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A hundred years ago, when I was a volunteer fireman and maybe one or two people full-time and when y'all set that sire ring off Saturday, everybody in our meeting said, what's that? What's that? I said, that's the way we used to show up and we had pagers back then. And I lived in those apartments across the road there while I was building my home. So I got used to it between that and the train. I felt like I was in the movie My Cousin Vinny a lot of nights, so waking up. But the fire department has changed a whole lot and you, when I say guys, I'm talking about the ladies and gentlemen, you guys look real good. So we were very proud of you and it's a great honor to be the one to make this motion. It's been a long time coming. So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution 2025-2633, approving the fire services and transfer of assets agreement as presented and authorizing the town manager, the town attorney to negotiate and execute all necessary closing documents.
Second. Second from Mr. Vance, motion by Mr. Matthews. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay. Clearly it passes unanimously. Good job, team. And now let's do a little bit more recognition. It's easy to look out here and see the firefighters in uniform. These are the guys that get the glory. These are the guys we see working out there every day on our behalf to keep us safe. It's easy to spot y'all. Y'all make a tremendous contribution, whether we're calling you Garner Volunteer Fire or Garner Fire Rescue or Garner Fire Department, it's the guys and gals who have been doing this for decades and made Garner the great place that it is. It's easy to recognize you. Sometimes we don't see Ariel and Kim quite as often. They're not quite as visible, but they're behind the scenes making this stuff click as well. If the firefighters in uniform are the backbone and the muscle of the organization, I often think of the Garner Fire Rescue Board as the soul of the fire department, the fire team. And I'm going to ask the four of them who are here with us this evening to stand up as I call your name and remain standing, but I particularly want to recognize the Garner Fire Rescue Board, the president, Joe Sample, sir, if you would stand up for us, Nancy Anderson, a key member through the years, if you would stand up, Johnny Foster, please, and Stacy Colax are with us here. Those are the ones that are with us and I'm sure watching from home are Kenny Walker and Mark Wilson. This is a great team. You guys are the soul, the heartbeat of what's been going on for the decades. We can't thank you enough. We're going to continue to call on you for decades to come. And if you're not there, somebody will be there to take your place. So you can sit down. I'm also, I also want to recognize the MOU committee that's worked so hard. Some of their names were called out. I particularly want to recognize the ones that are here tonight. I won't make you stand up again, but if you would raise your hands as I call out your name as being on the committee, Mr. Elmo Vance, Phil Matthews, Nancy Anderson was on that ongoing way, Joe Sample, of course, your retired fire chief, he doesn't look very retired at the moment, Matt Poole certainly on the MOU, a curatorial member, our town manager, Jody Miller that you just saw, and watching from home again, I'm pretty sure Kenny Walker, Carl Williams and Chief Greg Grayson, he made a tremendous contribution to this. He does business as NC Fire Chief, but this is a guy who has helped a lot of other municipalities and fire departments come together as well. So a great team that worked for us all there. We can't thank you enough for that. And our other way of saying thank you is we put you first on the agenda. And now that we're finished, unless we have any other observations or questions, and we do have one.
I do. Just a quick comment and I just want to say, we have the best fire department in the county, the state and probably the entire country. And you all humbly have the backs of everyone, not just in Garner, but beyond the town limits. And we promise you that this council will have yours and do everything, everything we can to support you and your future greatness and success. You're here.
Here, here, indeed. And again, I think the driving force over the eight years, I think the motto that wasn't printed anywhere, but to make sure that no firefighter took a step backwards in any way. We can't make you any better firefighters. You're the best that they are. But what we can do, what the town can do, is what we're good at, that's some of the behind the scenes stuff. Let our public works people help with some of your routine maintenance and vehicle maintenance. Let our HR people do some of that behind the scenes work. Let our IT people help keep you up to date with the ever-changing world. Those are the things we want to add. We just want you to keep doing the fantastic job you've always done and make Garner proud. Let's have a big round of applause for all our firefighters. And y'all are welcome to stick around as long as you like, or if you have to get to a scout meeting or a ballgame, that's okay too. Thank you. Thank you again.
Well, it's like we've lost 90% of our audience.
They're going to worse now.
There you go. If anybody wants to move up front, we've got plenty of seating.
Some of them like to be at an arm's distance back there. They move pretty quietly for such big. That's great. Well, thanks so much. And we'll move right along here. The next item is our consent agenda. Again, this is a number of items that council has time to look at previously a number of times and now they've been lumped together to, perhaps we can approve them all at one thing, at one time, one action. And certainly the first one that's on here, I'm going to read it out because this is the one that gets more publicity and has had more people excited about it than the next four on here put together, and that was the Bojangles coming soon. So we're going to continue to approve their annexation here as part of their process. People apparently love a Bojangles, particularly when it's on their way into work in the morning. So we're very happy about that. So there is a consent agenda with a number of items that we've looked at. If there's, if we don't see any items that need to be pulled off for further consideration, then I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Behringer, seconded by Mr. Matthews. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. It passes unanimously. Good work, council. Now we move along to public hearings. And we do have a couple of these and these are very important. And it's always good to read the little disclaimer here. Tonight's public hearings are legislative hearings which do not require sworn testimony. However, person interested in speaking must sign up with the town clerk. Town staff will present a brief presentation followed by the applicant and other persons who wish to comment on the item will be recognized to speak. Council requests groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative. So let's start out with item number one on the public hearings, and this is a conditional rezoning request at 5828 Fayetteville Road. Our presenter is Thomas Walzendorf from our planning department. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, town council. Good evening. I'll be presenting tonight CZ 24007, which is the conditional zoning for 5828 Fayetteville Road. Our applicant is Flores Capital LLC. The owner is Adelfo F. Flores. This is a tier one conditional rezoning request submitted by Flores Capital to rezone 0.6 acres plus or minus from rural agricultural to light industrial conditional. The site is along 401 South at the intersection of that road named Fayetteville Road. As a reminder, tier one requests do not include or require a site-specific master plan. For context, it is currently zoned rural agricultural. The area is mostly low-density residential. There's some agricultural area. It's currently vacant. It is on the west side of 401 South at the intersection of Fayetteville Road, roughly halfway between Simpkins Road and George's Landing. Although most of it is single-family residential now, there are also mixes of commercial and industrial uses, so it's not consistent wholly with the neighborhood typology that we'll talk about later. It also does fall within our commercial highway overlay district. And I'm going to explain more about that on the next slide here. Anything along 401 does fall within our commercial highway overlay district. There are prohibited uses, there are restricted uses. I did include a clip from the UDO as far as prohibited uses go and none of the conditions or permitted uses that the applicant is proposing are included in that. But I do want to highlight just on a high level, there are additional development standards, design standards and landscape standards that are built into the UDO in our commercial highway overlay district. For example, in the development standards, there are limits to the outdoor display of storage of goods. They would be limited to 50% if the parking is located in the street yard area or 66% if it's in the rear or side yards. So that is, you know, different from other parts of town. There are design standards including limits to the maximum building height. They would be limited to 24 feet because the site does adjoin residential uses. And there are, they can increase that if the setback distance increases one for one. And there are additional landscape standards that go above the general standards in the UDO. That does relate to high intensity activities and certain non-residential uses adjoining residential uses. That does not apply in their conditions in their case. The site is also within the area managed by the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. The town has built in requirements of that into our development review. The site is in this yellow portion there designated as new suburban, so there is an impervious surface limit of 12%. If the applicant were to retain an inch of storm water on site, they could go up to 30% impervious. However, as you'll see in their written conditions, they are writing into their conditions, they're not going to exceed the 12%. They did make changes some from the first time you've seen this. There were five original permitted uses at that time. They have reduced their uses to only two. They are proposing for uses other office uses not listed or flex space, other light industrial manufacturing, warehousing or transportation uses not listed. The UDO requires them to have 50% brickstone masonry materials on the exterior of the building. They are proposing 60, so they're proposing above the standard. They have a covered awning they're proposing of a certain size with light fixture to be installed at the entrance of the building. As far as condition number four, it is with their perimeter buffer, they are required to have 22 and a half feet width of their perimeter buffer. However, the required height is just four feet in a semi-opaque buffer. The applicant is proposing six feet and opaque. So that is above and beyond the standards of the UDO. Number five, the applicant describes their proposal for storm water on site or as far as runoff goes on site, they're proposing to construct a bioswale that's going to make sure the water does not impact the residential areas behind them and kind of pull the water towards 401 to the normal drainage pattern along the highway. Also, number six is that a new written condition where they are proposing that they're going to not exceed the 12% impervious surface. And with their proposal, they've determined that they can do all they want within that constraint. We were able to evaluate nine growth framework criteria. Six of those rated strongly consistent, one was modestly split and two were strongly inconsistent. Those two strongly inconsistent ratings are due to the zoning choice of light industrial in the neighborhood typology and the industrial warehouse building type. Also in a neighborhood gets a low, strongly inconsistent rating. However, we would note that in the area, there are already some non-residential uses in that neighborhood typology, some commercial and industrial uses. Overall, we found strong consistency with the development intensity metrics. The land use and community character consistency was largely mixed. They did get higher ratings for the low-intensity uses and that it's a small infill redevelopment. Also, the size and scale of their development is consistent with the sites in the area, mostly small lots. This is not going to be a large-scale development. They did get lower ratings for a lack of design features and kind of a treatment as corridor as a destination and also a lack of pedestrian network connection. However, we would note that that is a pre-existing condition of the area. There's not robust sidewalk or off-street infrastructure along 401. The full consistency review is in your staff report. So despite those two strong non-supporting scores for growth framework criteria, we do believe that you can find an overall finding of consistency with this proposal. There's also marginal support for the land use and community character consistency, but with additional input from the public and with additional input from the public and from council, the applicant is open to making any tweaks that can make their proposal stronger. Our next steps tonight would be to finish conducting and close our public hearing. You would then refer this to planning commission for their findings of planned consistency and recommendation to approve or deny. And then Town Council, you will see this again for reasonableness and the decision to approve or deny. I will note the applicant is here again tonight. They don't have a formal presentation again. They can answer any of your questions as well as staff. So that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Please stand by, Mr. Walzendorf. Thank you for going the extra mile. This is like the second time you've presented this one here.
It's okay.
Do what it takes. Are there any, would you like to identify yourself by name and address and tell us what you have to add?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, Town Council. Thank you for having me again. My name is Stephen Legipo. Again, I'm on behalf of my uncle because he doesn't speak English, so I'm his translator. And my address is in Clayton, North Carolina, because I'm helping him, so I don't live in Garner. I wish I did, but I'm planning to move on. So yeah, I'm probably going to move to Garner because it's growing a lot. But yeah, like Thomas said, we heard the first public hearing about the inconsistencies on the uses and conditions. So we went and tweaked a little bit of it and make sure it was a little bit more understandable of what we're trying to do. We did emphasize on the twelve percent because we cannot exceed that even if we wanted. We don't want to exceed on that. We want to, like I say, put a small metal building, and it's all for the work that my uncle has on the restaurants and the markets. So that's pretty much what we've been doing with the planning commission and all that stuff.
Okay. Well, thank you also for your patience going through this process. There's a lot to it. At this point, let's recognize council members who may wish to ask questions while we have you both up here. Let's start with Mr. Vance. Questions?
Yes, just one thing, just to amplify what was mentioned last time. I know that there was a specific discussion about the uses and the concerns about the tier one. Can you pull up slide number five, please, again? If that one should be rezoning and I just want to.
We're going this way.
I think it's slide number five, the one with the rezoning.
Oh, okay.
Uses.
I guess it is this one.
There we go, right there. And the point I want to make here is that because it is a tier one, there are a number of varying uses that could be applied. However, you've gone through the effort of cutting down your uses to a specific use. That was a major concern of mine. And that is cut it down substantially, and that is appreciated. Just want to point that out.
Thank you, Mr. Dallinger.
Yeah, just thank you for your patience in working with us and, you know, glad we can support the local entrepreneurs and, you know, doing it on your own is even harder. I have no problems with the conditions. I do have a question for staff and probably the attorney. On the twelve percent, I thought that in the Swift Creek commercial didn't have the same impervious limits. I mean, and I'm fine with them staying as a condition. I guess my question is, do the voluntary conditions supersede those requirements so that, and it rides with the property? If the property were to be sold, it would still be held to that twelve percent, or?
Yes.
Yes.
If it's written into the conditions, it would supersede?
Okay. Thank you. That was my question. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Behringer?
And I think that's why they wrote that in rather than just, sorry, to emphasize that.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Good point. Ms. Behringer.
Clarification on the, on the conditions dated 2/25/25. This is a proposed building with an approximate square footage of sixteen hundred square feet. Now, at the other meeting, you had a neighborhood meeting, and you said it was going to be twelve hundred square feet. So we've gone from twelve hundred, it's in writing, to sixteen hundred. Changed impervious surface, all that kind of stuff. Somebody help me out here. Is it twelve hundred or is it sixteen hundred?
So the, the idea of the building, it's fifty by thirty. So it's roughly fifteen hundred. But since we might make it shorter or might make it a little bit bigger so it doesn't exceed the twelve percentage, that's why we consider just to put the sixteen harder and then we can tweak it down to twelve hundred. So it's not like we're going to make something extra bigger than sixteen hundred, but still it gives us a margin to go down the sixteen hundred. So that's why we pretty much change it and.
Shouldn't that condition say not to exceed sixteen hundred square feet? Because it says the approximate square footage, it predicts it could go down to twelve. Wouldn't it be cleaner to say not to exceed?
I believe.
Because we don't know what size it's going to be. We just know it's not going to exceed a size.
The condition has to do with the overall impervious surface, so the building is one piece of that.
Mm-hmm.
So if the building gets bigger, the parking and other impervious would have to get smaller. They would have to stay within the percentage.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, again, we have two different, one thinks the papers is twelve hundred, one says sixteen hundred.
Yeah.
Make it simple. Shouldn't we just say it's not going to exceed one, or it's not going to, you know, I'm just saying that we have two different, we have two different footprints.
If you approve this with the conditions, the conditions will control over any prior statements they might have made. And they would have to come back and have an amendment done to the conditions to change that.
Okay. The same as the neighborhood meeting, you told the neighborhood it's going to be twelve hundred square feet, not sixteen hundred. Anyway, all right, that's fine. Inconsistent.
Mr. Matthews, okay. Well, let me ask you, at this point, you guys can sit down if you like. Thank you. And then we'll find out if anyone, anyone else has signed up to speak on this.
No, only the applicants signed up to speak.
Okay. Well, that being the case, then we will close the public hearing and we'll move toward considering a motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
That closes public hearing. The action before the council is to whether or not to refer this case on to the planning commission for the next step in the review process. And I will ask you, is there such a, such a motion?
I move to refer the case to the planning commission for consistency review and recommendation.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Vance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Behringer. There's a motion, a second, to refer this case on to the planning commission. Let's go with, with a voice vote on this. All in favor of referring this to the planning commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank, thank you very much. And that, that closes down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving along to number two, at the other end of request, instead of building a building, now we're talking about tearing down a building. How exciting. Demolition here. And to present the details of this is our code compliance officer, Nathan Driver. What can you tell us about tearing down a house?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Tonight before you, we have a public hearing for 220 Lanah Serkay. And we're just going to run through a quick background of the property and then what we're asking for. A list of property owners with Wake County is Warren Dixon Wilson and heirs of Brian and Keith Wilson. The dwelling was built in nineteen eighty-four. The current condition of the property is dilapidated. The dwelling has severe structure damage from a fire back in two thousand seventeen. And since we started this process, we have not had any contact with any agent of the property owner or the property owner themselves. Just a quick timeline for you. Back in April of last year, the dwelling was posted unsafe, and all appropriate letters were sent out to property owners and also additional addresses found by the legal department. In May of last year, a hearing was scheduled with the lead building inspector here within the inspections department due to no contact with the property owners. On May twenty-third is when we held the hearing. There was no representative of the property owner or the owner themselves present. The hearing upheld the findings of the field inspector, and an order to repair or demolish was issued. September of last year, the time limit had expired for the owner to make the repairs or to demolish the dwelling. And in January of this year, two thousand twenty-five, a quote was received from a contractor for demolition in the amount of seventeen thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, and that included a three thousand dollar amount set aside for asbestos abatement. And then in February of this year, still having no response from the property owner, additional postings in the newspaper regarding the hearing, a hearing was scheduled in front of you night, you guys tonight. A little more background of the findings of fact, the dwelling was built in nineteen eighty-four. An inspection of the subject dwelling was undertaken pursuant of section seven fifteen of the Town of Garner Code of Ordinances and NC General Statutes one sixty D dash twelve oh three. The following conditions were seen during the inspection. The building is unfit for human habitation as defined in section seven two of the town's Minimum Housing Code, and the building is unsafe as defined by North Carolina General Statute, section one sixty D dash twelve oh one. Building is currently vacant and open to, and open and is attractive nuisance. Enclosed carport roof structure is compromised and in danger of collapse. Exterior walls of the structure are compromised and in danger of collapse as a failure of deciding windows, doors, and other exterior coverings allowing water to infiltrate the structure. The dwelling is open to weather and in a state, in a state of decay that has compromised the structural integrity. The required repairs to the property would exceed fifty percent of the current value of the dwelling. The condition of the property, the dwelling has extensive structural damage from a fire in two thousand seventeen. And again, still no contact has been received from the property owner or any agent of the property owner. This is what was ordered back in May of last year. The property owners were hereby ordered to demolish the dwelling at two twenty Lanah Serkay or obtain proper permits to restore the dwelling to habitable condition as defined by the North Carolina State Building Code, the Town of Garner's Minimum Housing Code ordinance, and other applicable laws. This is a site map, and this is in the Camelot neighborhood off of Raina Road, off of Lanah Serkay. It has a community well and a subject system there on the, on site. And these are a few of the site photos of the property. And tonight, we're requesting that you adopt an ordinance compelling the building inspector to effecate the demolition of the dwelling as quoted by the preferred contractor. And I do have a quick, short video for you all tonight that gives you a better view of the property itself. dilapidated condition as it stands currently.
Mr. Driver, thank you for a very informative presentation and going the extra mile. The video kind of brought it home, didn't it?
Yes, sir.
It's one thing to see it from across the street. It's a sad, sad situation that a family had that kind of tragedy with the fire. Even sadder that we're not able to be in contact with the owners or the heirs thereof. And it's sad that the neighbors have had to be exposed to this for almost eight years now. But we take it very, very seriously when we go to make some drastic action on someone else's property, like demolishing what's left of the house. Have to do everything by the book, give every person an opportunity to be recognized and to salvage whatever's left of the situation. But thank you and your department for the hard work you've done to try to bring this to closure and moving it ahead. With that being said, I'll ask, while we're still in the public hearing, I'll ask the council members, starting with Mr. Matthews, are there any questions?
Just one brief, as you're, great presentation, by the way. I liked the video and all that quite detail. Once we tear this property down, it's going to be a vacant lot there, obviously. And nobody seems to step up. What happens to those properties? We've had to demolish it. Do we ever, is it ever going to market, or is the way the town can recover that property and sell it for, try to get some of our, our dollars back on the same, what's the options on something like, because I don't know.
So any of the demolition fees are made a lien against the property. And so I think there is a process once the liens or taxes reach a certain amount with Wake County. Wake County will take in that property, foreclose on it. And then I believe Wake County has the option to sell it off. Is that correct, Ms. Jones?
Yes, so similar to a few years ago when the town demolished the property on Jones Sausage Road, once the abatement is completed, the demolition's completed, we'll come back to you with a resolution for a lien. That lien will go on the property, will then coordinate with Wake County. It's not unusual in this case where there's no contact with the owners. There are unpaid taxes as well. So the demolition lien will probably get this to the point where Wake County will put this on the foreclosure list. And then hopefully they go through that property, then someone can buy, buy it, pay off the tax liens as well as the demolition lien, and then rebuild or reuse the property in some way.
Excellent question. Mr. Singleton?
So you need, the town or the county has had any contact with any of these owners? No response at all?
No, sir. And Ms. Jones and Ms. Gibbs were able to find a location or address at the homeless shelter in Raleigh, which is the last known address of the sun, I believe. And we sent letters there and called the homeless shelter and the voicemails and just haven't had any response from them at all.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Behringer, questions? Mr. Dallinger?
No questions.
Okay. Well, excellent presentation. We'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And hearing, no, no one has signed up to speak?
That's correct. No one signed up.
Okay. Well, that does close the public hearing. At this point, I'll ask the council members for a motion and a second to adopt the, the ordinance that will allow us to demolish this, this unsafe structure there.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Mr. Singleton, second by Mr. Matthews to adopt this ordinance. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thanks for all your hard work. A lot, a lot goes into that. And now moving on to new and old business, the first order is acceptance of a demolition bid related to the same property over there. And our presenter is our chief code compliance officer, Mr. Leo Cuello. If you wouldn't mind, give us a little background about what the next step is in, in dealing with this situation. And again, it sounds like you guys are already a step ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. On page one forty-seven of the agenda is the contract that, for the demolition. So if you have any questions on the contract, I can answer that.
Okay. Stand by, and we'll let him review that just a little bit. But clearly, you've done your homework there. You've accepted bids. You've selected the one from Cecil Holcomb Renovations, Inc.
Correct.
To do the work that had been previously described and go through the rest of the process of cleaning up and disposing of the property and trying to recoup our demolition.
That is correct.
And pass due property tax. So are there any questions related to the motion, the action there?
No questions.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion and a second to award this contract to Cecil Holcomb Renovations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Singleton, second by Mr. Matthews to award this contract. I ask council members, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Cuello.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Where, where do the funds come from for the demolition?
Excuse me?
Where do the funds come from for the demolition?
Good evening, mayor and council. So we've got money set aside in contract services for something like this.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so certainly, certainly the town pays for it in the short run. We hope in less than the eight years it took to get around to tearing it down, we'll make some reclaim of our expense on that after Wake County exercises theirs. If the bank. If the bank has any outstanding lien, who knows what else is in there? But as they unravel that and unpack that, hopefully the town can recoup some of these expenses. Sad story all the way around. Okay, moving right along to committee reports from council members representing the different committees that you might be involved in. Let's start with one of my favorites, the Veterans Affairs Committee. And let's start with Mr. Matthews.
Nothing at this time. One thing we are special since the retreat session is the Veterans Memorial, we're gonna go ahead and move forward to improvise a temporary bypass so to be a little easier accessible for those bike riders, so it's not a stiff cut. Excuse me, get choked up, listen. And we're gonna put two temporary gates there blocking each entrance. It'll say Veterans Memorial and direct traffic to those paths. So there won't be dog walking and people walking on it and riding bicycles and defacing any of the bricks. So that will be a temporary fix till we do the final project on the, on the park. So, but this will be an immediate remedy, and they're going to get started on as quickly as possible.
Excellent.
That's all I got.
Thanks for your attention to detail on that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Singleton?
The committee reports.
Ms. Behrger?
I do have one. We are, the Public Art Committee is moving right along. We, two of our club committee members met with some of the officers from the Historic Museum and had a discussion last Thursday about what type of mural they would put on the side of the Pearl Street building. I was not there, but I was told that it went very well, and we're getting ready to start submitting some requests for bids. And I talked with Jeff Herr today, who's the sculptor for the sculpture piece at Avery and Garner Road. He hopes to, he said, weather permitting, he would have the remainder of the sculpture in place on Thursday. Of course, the weather can make a change there, but he will have that in place on Thursday. And then he is pretty involved with some other projects right now, but in about three weeks, he'll have some freedom to join us in an unveiling ceremony for the sculpture being the first piece of public art in Garner.
How are we? Great, great progress. What's the other committee reports?
Yes, just want to say that several board and commission positions will need to be filled shortly, and the HR committee will be meeting in the very near future to strategize how to move forward.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you very much. And that moves us along to a manager report, so I bet we have some.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Just two quick items I just wanted to remind council of. First, the annual State of the Town video is now available on demand on the Town of Garner YouTube page. Council had an opportunity to do a early screening of the State of the Town video during your retreat, and it's now available on our YouTube site. So I encourage residents to check it out, learn all about the accomplishments of 2024, but all the great things that are also ahead in 2025 and beyond. And then the town's annual spring unprepared yard waste and bulk trash pickup starts the week of March 24th. Some neighborhoods, for some neighborhoods, and the entire process is scheduled to continue through the week of April 7th. So information has been posted on the town's website if residents want to check that out with more information about how we're asking you to prepare some of the items to be picked up. But just wanted to remind everybody that that's soon coming up this month as well. So that's all the announcements and updates, mayor. Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions from council? Well, just let me comment on that unrestricted trash pickup. It's things that we take for granted. This is a great, great service, a great opportunity for our citizens to get rid of stuff that doesn't go in the usual yard waste or the recycle of the trash. And probably lots of other municipalities, there's, there's a lot more involved and harder to get that done. Also, just to comment on the State of the Town video, I am in it, I am in the video, and I understand it's gone completely viral. There's actually dozens of people who have actually checked into that site. I don't know if they finished looking at it, but it was up in the dozens of people. Quite impressive, quite impressive.
I heard Sunday night at the Oscars, they referenced it, referenced it then.
Yeah, I saw that. It's good.
Who knows?
Honorable mention.
Totally viral. It's crashing the internet, crashing the internet.
Autographs. Crash and burn, maybe.
Hey, I'm sitting right here, man. Give me a break. Ms.
I couldn't resist, sorry.
Ms. Jones, I bet we have attorney reports now.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. A few months ago, maybe in December, I talked to you about the code revision project that I will be undertaking this year, and we're going to be starting with the nuisance ordinance. We'll make a presentation to you at the next meeting, but I wanted to present. Technology. Operator error, sorry about that. I have been working with the communications department to come up with a public outreach program for this code revision project. So you're seeing a webpage that's been designed by Bella in our communications department to help with this. So what this will provide is a link to the existing Code of Ordinances, a link to the UDO, as well as direction to Garner Info App for anyone who wants to make a complaint about a current code violation. In addition to that, there will be information on any upcoming proposals to make amendments to the Code of Ordinances. So as you'll see on this, we, I've already had them link the charter amendment that's pending before the General Assembly. As you'll see under Chapter 6, nuisance, it will be presented to the town council at the meeting on the 18th. This would normally have been presented at a work session, but we're moving it up to kind of balance out some of the items on the March work session. So it would not, we're not asking you to approve any amendments at that time, but it'll be the first preview of those proposed amendments. The other two features are there will be a sign up for alerts, so people can sign up. And then anytime there's going to be an ordinance amendment, either a draft is available or it's going to be presented to council, citizens will get an, interested citizens will get an alert to this. As well as a public comment form, which will be available for citizens and residents to provide comments on any ordinances that they think should be amended, ordinances we don't have. This is a way of getting public input into the process for the code revisions. So if town council likes this idea, we can go live with this as early as tomorrow.
Any questions related?
I have a process question on the amending ordinance. Is it similar to like text amendments, or does it have to have like multiple readings at multiple hearings? What's the?
So, good question. It all depends on the state enabling law. But for the most part, these can be adopted at any regular council meeting as long as on the first time they're presented, it's a super majority is required. You don't get a, which in this case would be a four fifths vote. If you don't get a four fifths vote the first meeting, then it has to come back for a second reading. Now, there will be a few ordinances that will require, such as minimum housing, you heard the minimum, the demolition tonight. That's an ordinance that's under 160D, so that does have, that would track the same way a text amendment would make. It's not clear whether that has to be referred to the planning commission, but, but council certainly can, can refer any of these to the planning commission. But, but yes, as we present them, I'll tell you what the state requirements are for how you can adopt these particular amendments. But there is no one rule for any of these. It all depends on, on what authority we have to adopt ordinances on a specific topic.
Good, good question. Thanks for your attention to detail. Any other questions from council members or attorney? It's a big project, and I think I'm getting the consensus here that yes, to move ahead with that.
Yes, please do.
Keep us between the ditches. I don't know if it takes a formal vote.
No, I mean, if there's a consensus, that's fine. And as I think we talked about before, this will be a long-term project. There's a lot to do, and you won't be getting something every month on this, but I'll be giving you some kinds of updates as, as things are coming forward.
Yeah, I've got another question about timeline and what, when, when will it stop? We've opened up to the public, you'd end up in a situation where there's all kinds of things floating around. I know, like, we would have to as either an individual or council's sponsor, a recommendation, but is there a finite period at the last point? We'll take public comment and we'll kind of stabilize? Or is this just gonna be rolling on for?
I think it's a, it's gonna be, you know, a work in progress. And, you know, basically, anything that comes to you as a public hearing, then you, if you close the public hearing, that stops the comment. There may be some ordinances that there's more public interest in than others, and if you want us to hold a public meeting, in that case, we could, you know, hold informational meetings. But having this webpage and a way for the community to engage will sort of gauge how much interest there is in certain ordinances. As I mentioned before, some of our ordinances are quite old and, and out of date, and there are some technical amendments that we need to make to bring them in line with the current statutory references and things. But other than that, it's, it's sort of where does council want to go with some of these ordinances?
And that's why I'm kind of trying to be sensitive to the resources of our legal department. So if 20 or 30 or 100 public comments come into the forum, who sees those and who's sort of vetting them or assessing whether they reach a certain threshold? Do they come to us as elected officials to have eyes on what the constituents are saying? So I'm just kind of, I'm trying to be careful we don't open floodgates by accident, and then there's no ending to it.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll see how it goes, but right now, the comments, you know, I will receive them, communications will also monitor them, they can be exported into, you know, a spreadsheeter. And then it will also depend on which department kind of implements these ordinances, and they will assist in vetting and looking through those. But at any time, you know, they, all of these comments will be public records and can be made available both to council, you know, as well as the public if they're interested.
We have them sort of presented in concert with our work sessions? They're not part of the agenda, but just in there? I mean, I'd like to see them, whatever they are.
Yeah, so anytime we have a draft of an ordinance ready to present to you, we will give you a summary of comments as well.
Perfect.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Thanks for the clarification on that. We do want to kind of, particularly as we get it started, and this is apparently one of the most thorough reviews and updating that's been done in quite a while.
It's just starting.
That's what I say. It's just starting.
And it will be dependent on what the legal department can do. So don't expect a whole lot between now and July 1st while we're working, you know, on the fire transfer, but, you know, and, you know, there may be a situation where state law changes and we have to change a particular ordinance, and that will become a higher priority.
Gotcha. Yeah, thank you for keeping the council involved and notified on all this. We trust you to help us perfect this process as we go through it, know when to bring it to our attention, to get a sign off, or when we want you to just keep moving ahead. Thanks to you and your legal department, a great project.
And we did want to start with nuisance, because most of the nuisance complaints are about tall grass and weeds, and because we're getting into the growing season, there's just some timing where if we're gonna make changes, we want to make sure that council adopts those changes and the word can get out to residents as to what the new requirements might be.
Excellent. And we may be looking at three of the judges and enforcers right back there on this topic, code violations and nuisance violations and things. And I've been extremely impressed with our staff so far, not only that they know the rules and try to enforce the rules, but they try to be human beings and talk with the, with the citizens who has that particular issue, step them through that. They're not just snatching cars out of people's yards, they're not just issuing fines, they're trying to work through to help our citizens make Garner a better place. So I really appreciate the positive attitude they've approached this with. It's always touchy. One man's junk is another man's treasures. We think it's yard art, or they think it's trash. We never know. So thanks very much for what you're doing, there folks. And thank you, Ms. Jones, for your work on this. Anything else you need to tell us?
Nope, that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Then we get to council reports. If there are council members who want to make reports that were not related to the committee actions we just reviewed, let's start with Mr. Vance's end and come down and see if there's any other council reports.
I just want to say thank you to the staff for the, for the information provided during the retreat last week and all the hard work that went into doing that. That's all I have.
Mr. Dallinger?
I'll second that. It's a lot of good conversation and engagement, and I think helped all of us get on the same page and going even better in the same direction. So thanks for all the hard work that went into the retreat.
Excellent. Ms. Behrger?
Just one item, and that's something I've brought up over and over again, and that is the sunken manholes on Garner Road and need for some repairs at the corner of Avery Street and Garner Road. So hopefully now we will have some time to be able to focus on that and get it taken care of and caught up.
Excellent. Mr. Singleton?
A few items. I want to welcome Mr. Poole, slash Chief Poole, slash Matt Poole, who are, who are up here with us and our new assistant town manager, glad that he's up here with us. I have to say, I can remember when Matt was a little boy, but I can. When his granddaddy used to get in the golf cart and ride, he lived on St. Mary's Street and right up to Hudson Hardware. That's before, that's before it was the new building, just when the, that's when the street ran through the parking lot, as you know. So I can remember that from many years ago. I also want to mention, you know, every year, every day, every week sometime, every time every day, you lose good folks who were vital to the community, active in the community, local business people, but they did so much more. And last week, we lost on the same day, Lee Hudson and Ronald Williams. And I've worked for Lee for 18 years, so, you know, the impact he had here on Garner. Then when they, we bought the building in Clayton in 85 and started building that business up down there, his impact here and the importance of what he did to help people. Big rotary person, you know, went to conferences all over the world, I believe. That was something that was very important to him, the impact he had here. I was talking with Barrett Penny at the retreat, that when they did the horn and did the volunteers, we were in the park, and more than one time, we'd be in the front loading something for somebody, and it went off, and Lee was just running down Highway 50. He ran down to the station, more than once I saw him. And I used to be a group of those guys who were hanging at the store, and so I remember that, but his, his importance of what he and his family have done here in Garner will be, continue to be felt for many years to come. And Ronald Williams was someone who grew up here, went to school here, just like Lee did, went to Garner High School, and had his, he and his brother had a business, and he had another business, a solid waste removal company. And both of them passed away of the same disease, a pancreatic cancer, both of them. Went to the same clinic in Chicago for, for treatments and so forth, and both of them passed away on the same day. So it's, you have people who have an impact on your community, impact on, on their neighbors and their, their family and their friends, but also the whole community. And that's what both of those, both of those men did, and they both passed away way too young, in my opinion. And it was a sad day for Garner, but at least, you know, all the suffering they had and the pain they went through, at least they're relieved of that. So I just want to mention that as someone who had an impact on me, but also for many, many people, as I know that Lee and Mr. Gupta were mayors, were not mayor. The mayor and Lee were neighbors for many, many years and grew up together. And what was interesting was being in the, in the line waiting at the visitation, and so many people who went to school with them would come up and talk to me. And that's, I told them I had five or six, seven people asking me questions, and now you remember this, remember that, bringing up names. And it was really, really neat to talk to people, again, because that's people that, because y'all graduated in 70 or 71, and all those people, or many of those people are still around here. So I just wanted to mention both of those names, that's all.
Yeah, that was looking on the bright side. And on the same comment, the other bright side, both of those gentlemen who had built family businesses, Lee was the second generation, his, Ronald the first, but both of them have had it set up to pass to the next generation of the business. That was the inspirational part, and that doesn't happen by accident, took foresight, took working with their families. But both of those businesses will continue on in the family.
Right, yes, sir.
Mr.?
Along in that same line, I met the grandson, or adopted grandson, as I was told, in the bank. I was in there one day and got a chance to chat with him a little bit, and yeah, it's gonna be in good hands for a long time, and his legacy will live quite a bit. I really enjoyed our work retreat. It was interesting, we learned a lot, we spent some time with each other and made some good decisions. It was well planned out. It was kind of unique, we're, we're in the, the fireman's training room, and what we did tonight was just kind of went together really good, so. So, I want to congratulate the staff on that. And, and Mr. Poole over here, now no longer Chief Poole, but just glad to have him on board and for his first night with us. And it's good to look around, see all the, with the firemen and everybody, the new hires and everybody's coming on with us. We've got a lot of new blood coming in, and it speaks well for, for the hiring. So I know with Matt as well as April, and feeling putting some good folks in, so we'll all come out good when it's all said and done. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Absolutely. A lot of good news here tonight, almost as exciting as a Bojangles. That's still just taking. I, I do want to seriously, though, add my compliments to the team who put together that retreat headed by our town manager, John Hodges, assistant town manager, key player in that, a number of other team members involved. But through the many decades, I've been to many, many retreats, some government-based, some private enterprise, all over the place. I've never seen one that got better input, stayed on track better, addressed the issues. And as I told Jody after the meeting, I'm glad we didn't waste a bunch of money on some outside facilitator or, she and her team could not have done a better job at facilitating the conversation, getting the stuff done. It was really inspirational to see what our staff can do, even when they're telling their bosses what to do. So I really appreciate the effort that was done. Big, big hand to all of you guys. Well, and that concludes the council reports. There's no closed session this evening, to my knowledge, and so I might be willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Is all in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? All right, it passes unanimously. Meeting adjourned. Good, good job, folks, good job.